Special board of finance meeting with the order for the landlord ET. I first over business this October 29th.
Can you pass it?
Thanks.
Yep.
Is there any comment on Zoom?
I don't.
All right, um, doing none, then the next item is acceptance of the October 29th meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes from October 29th, 2024 meeting. Second.
Voting.
Oh, yes, uh, point out that Jeff Heck is voting member tonight.
Who seconded that motion, Mike? Okay, thank you.
Are there any comments or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Right.
Aye. Any opposed, abstention? Okay, that carries. Um, communication correspondence, um. I do have one, I think, um, that I sent you. We received from the Board of Ed. Non-lapsing fund information that I did not commit to memory. Go with me. Uh, the Board of Ed, um, made a motion to share that with us to deposit $230,000 from the fiscal year ended June 30th into the non-lapsing fund. And do not believe that is something we approve or disapprove, looking at our treasury.
Uh, used to be, but I believe that now it's not.
Oh, it's not, huh?
They can do it at their discretion. Yep. I don't think you need to any longer.
When did that change? Last year?
I think this.
This year?
Year.
Uh, it's November 29th.
I think it could have been last year, because I don't think they took any last year, so I'm not.
I think it could have been last year. It doesn't.
Yeah.
Or is it legal?
Okay, uh, did anybody else have any communication or correspondence they wish to, um, share?
There was an email today about protocol for, uh, I think you should, didn't it come to everybody? Um, about a, uh, protocol for capital. Did I see that come?
I did see that.
Who'd it come from? Uh, to the budget group?
Yeah, to the main.
Oh, the Board of Finance comment?
Yeah.
Thank you, I did not see that. Came today from Eden.
I don't know if you want to, you're going to just accept that, we really can't talk about it, right?
Right, it's lengthy. Um, so, yeah, we could just note that it's from a member of the public asking for, um, standard process for the Board of Finance, that's a go-to town meeting.
The other was capital.
Right, yeah, 99% of what we would send is capital.
Oh, but I, I just want to comment and not, uh, like, debate it or anything like that, but we do have a policy.
Yeah.
And we were going to review it, and I think that's actually a very good suggestion to have a checklist.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that you can kind of just, kind of quantify all the stuff that we put in.
Mm-hmm.
So I was looking at them, so we were going to bring it up at some point, review our policies that we passed last year.
Mm-hmm.
And I think, uh, when I do, I think I'll bring that to the board, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. That was a good suggestion.
Thank you. All right, new business, capital requests. Um, why don't we start with the Board of Ed?
Tom, are you talking? Well, I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Board of Ed. Oh, we're going to start with Board of Ed capital request.
Sure. Can you go ahead and come up here?
Um, well, normally I would, but since you said.
You look comfortable.
Comfortable there, yeah, go, go right ahead.
Okay, sorry, I'll use my outdoor voice.
Okay.
I don't know why the camera's not moving too.
You want to put one of these in front of it, push your stuff.
Okay, the Board of Education, good evening, everyone. Do you have the requests, um, that were going on and approved? And we're going to be needing that to exceed $152,000 for capital funds. All of these items have been on our capital plan, uh, for the last number of years. The first item is Seymour School Gym air conditioning. Um, I have supplied four quotes for mini splits for Seymour School Gym. Uh, we have quotes from KSE, Safemore, Urban Engineering, and FNF. Uh, the quotes from Safemore, UE, and FNF do not include running power for the main feed, so there's no, there's all costs to that. However, the quote from KSE doesn't include power for the main feed. We also have a separate quote, um, for those other companies that we did need to supply, uh, running the power, which is about $52,000. Um, fundamentally, in our plan, and what the Board of Education voted on, it does take some of about $70,000, which was our actual budgeting numbers when we were looking at, um, rooftop air conditioning. Since then, we have shifted to mini splits, which is similar, or not similar, which is what we have installed at Algro Gym a number of years ago, and they are proving, uh, to work very well, and it's a far less cost. So rather than the $70,000, we're looking for a cost, um, not to exceed $30,000, with of course any, um, extra funding to be returned to.
We'll take them, um, one at a time, then. Um, is there a motion on the Seymour School Gym air conditioning? I'm going to vote a question.
I'll make a motion to approve a sum, what did you end up at, seven, it's 30?
About 30.
A sum not to exceed $37,000 to.
It's worth three minutes with the, uh, the power running the main.
Yeah, but the amount, I just kept verifying him, not to exceed $30,000 for Seymour School air conditioning project with all unused funds to be returned to the town.
I'll second that. Okay, any questions for, um, Missy?
The only question I would have is, are any, the, the bid that you decided to go with, is that the company that put the mini splits in originally? The ones outside this? Oh, this is Seymour.
This is Seymour.
I'm thinking of Algro, nevermind.
This is Seymour.
So do we have any experience with this company, or is it?
We have experienced with a few, and so obviously I'm not an HVAC person, so I work with Ray Carlson.
Right.
It looks like we would go with FNF for the actual installation, and KSE for the, um.
Wiring.
For the wiring.
So was that, wasn't FNF the ones that did Algro?
FNF is actually our HVAC, um, company that we have a contract.
Right, okay.
For that school, that's correct.
I just can't remember where we approved it, the billing committee.
No, no, I don't know if FNF did, I think they did, the ones at all.
But there are, okay.
But they are a company that.
Fair enough, thank you.
So I do have a follow-up question as well. Um, are we thinking to the future for these heat pumps? I know most heat pumps nowadays can do, or, I'm sorry, uh, mini splits can do heating as well. Um, and I'm assuming Seymour is oil heat? Because there's no natural gas, is there natural gas on that road?
I would assume it's, I don't, I don't remember, that's a few years ago.
Um, just thinking to the future.
If, actually, he's doing heating as well.
Okay, yeah, and have we looked at, like, efficiency of those versus others, just thinking, I know how much it is to heat a gym, cost efficiency, we will see a lot more savings long-term if we're investing in the right equipment versus the cheapest available.
Right, and I don't believe we're actually going with the cheapest product.
That, that was my question, is, you know, looking at the full value.
The least expensive product. They're all within that field, but, um, we're going with a better product for, um, for both heating and AC, and for the, um, what Ray Carlson has determined is a little bit better for what we need in our school.
So we are looking to use it for sourcing heat as well, then? Or potentially, okay.
Probably don't need two, but we would have it anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Which are very solutionless, we can put it in all of the, both heating and AC.
Yep.
Missy, can you, I, I think you said it, but can you repeat which quote you're intending to go with, the combination quotes?
At this point, it looks like we will be going with FNF, 40 units.
Mm-hmm.
And then the KSE, the $52,000 for the extra.
The total of those is about $28,000.
About 28, I think.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, so there's a motion, a second, any, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstention? Okay, that one carries.
Thank you, uh, the next item is school camera upgrades. Re-land communications, which shows a vendor, they are a current provider for all of our surveillance and video recording equipment in all of our schools. We continue to phase in cameras to cover blind spots, replace outdated interwatt cameras, uh, moving into digital models. Re-land communications have done very well, and the local provider has our school district as a priority customer for technical support needs. We have been awarded, um, a grant from the state, uh, security, where we will be able to get reimbursement for these cameras for all eligible cause, um, which pertain to any camera systems we upgrade at our middle school and high school. And last I checked, it's about a 43% reimbursement rate for the state. Our camera priorities are clear, so there is a, um, a document that I've attached to about $63,000. However, our capital request is not to exceed 40,000, which is what we had in our plan, and I will, and I want to honor that. Um, then we'll have to determine priorities based on the list that I supplied. A cost breakdown, um, has been attached to your packet. Um, if permitted, I would ask that the 43% that comes back at reimbursement, if I can then utilize that, I can then use the extra 20,000 for the, the difference between the 40 and the 60,000 to finalize the camera purchases. Additionally, we have 12,000 for a new server to replace a unit that is at our middle school and high school. It should be replaced about five to seven years, and the unit right now is from 2015. Um, so it's, you know, well, well, well beyond its lifespan, um, and that pool is also, um, has been set.
Okay. Can, oh, I guess we need a motion, if we can ask questions. Is there a motion on this?
Make a motion, uh, except that it's written here. Let's see if you can value.
Is there a second?
Second.
52.
52.
Thank you.
Can, can you walk us through the, um, the math? So you're going to ask for 40, there'll be a reimbursement of something like 43% of that.
Right.
When that comes back, you would want to then, you're asking that money be made available to deal with the other 23,000 that you can't get to.
That, that would be my ask, if the board would entertain that. But the $40,000 is.
That's about 17,000.
I fixed them out, and the reimbursement comes through, we can then utilize that, so the rest of the camera runs, but that would be.
I'm just trying to figure, wouldn't it just go back into, and then we would reallocate? Because it's a different bid, right?
Yeah, I wonder, well.
I don't know how you, well, we would be approving something, we don't have any information on the.
I think it would have to come back.
But the other quote, I mean, we could still.
I think we would approve the 40. Then when the account's closed, you know, then that 17 goes back in capital, and then you can come ask for 17.
Sure.
I think your concern, though, is if you don't get the grant, you can't cover.
We already have a grant.
Oh.
Yes, we already, uh, received a grant.
So why are we?
It, but it's a reimbursement grant, so we have to fund it, then it gets reimbursed, so much like the HVAC grants.
But that won't, when you get reimbursed, to, like, then the project has to be completed, and I assume, is there an audit or something before the reimbursement?
I don't think there's an audit, we quarterly, we do updates on our grants. Um, and this is a, I want to say more of a simpler grant, because of the approach of the installation. We would do our quarterly report, um, and once we file our last, um, report, then the reimbursement will come back.
Does the grant cover the server as well, or is it just the cameras?
Jeff, I need to check on that.
Okay, because that, what I was going to get at was, would it be more advantageous to go for all of the cameras at once, so you don't have to refile the grant, and then use the, the reimbursement to do the server upgrade later?
I will work whatever is most advantageous to us with the funding.
I figured so much, but.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make sense to have them come back and do it, because all the hoods up, just do it all. Get that money back, and, because I would assume you'd have to pay additional funds to have them come back out.
Um, I don't, I don't think so, Tom.
No.
Um, it's, it's all through communications, um, I believe this is an inclusive price, uh, cost, that, that they come out in. Um, it's including cabling and everything, and the cost it gave us.
I mean, I can't imagine that if they're doing 40,000, they charge us again to come out and do 12,000 more? Like an additional, uh, trip charge or anything like that? I can't imagine that it would raise the price that much, but.
No, that'd be easier to sell it. But the only thing I struggle, we don't have any information on that other part. Right? We don't have any.
On, on what?
On the, uh, business, we don't have anything on the server, you know?
That came, that did come later.
You do.
No, the, not the priority camera upgrades.
You do.
Oh, it's in, okay, well, okay, then, but I'm okay with it.
It's a word document titled, "Re-land Communications at the Top."
As long as we have.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess where, my head is at is.
Oh, there is.
You could do the whole thing at once. Save for 57,000. And then when the money comes back, it just goes back into capital, and so the net is 40. Otherwise, we'll do the 40, there'll be some reimbursement, some future time you're going to ask for 17. And I, I just don't know. Yeah, to me, there's like six and one happening, I don't remember.
Well, if we've got quotes for all this stuff, we do, I think it's just okay to approve 60, 52, and then go from there. And then if anything comes back, it comes back, right? So I didn't see the bid for the other, as long as we have something showing what that is quantified by.
All right, for the, for the server?
For the, uh, extra cam, priority cameras.
Okay, got you. All right.
Was that the second? I got, no, I, I found.
Oh, okay.
My secretary printed it out, I didn't look at it, so, but, anyway.
Anybody else have thought on it?
What's your instinct, Jeff? What do you want to do?
Well, it seems, what I'm hearing is Missy saying, hey, give me 40,000.
Right.
We'll do this work, we'll get 17 back. When that comes back, I'm going to come, ask you for 17, to do the rest of the camera work, and maybe tie it up with a little bit of optimism, right?
Is that what you want, $40,000?
40,000, we'll be asked, I'm going to honor the 40,000, um, and then, I, the, the money will come back, reimbursement comes back to the town. And then you're just kind of putting it in your ear that I'd like to come back and say, hey, that reimbursement, use it to, to, to finish off the cameras on this list right now. The, the cameras are about $62,000.
All right, six and one, that's what you said.
All right, sure.
So what was the motion for?
Motion was for the 52, so that's the 40 plus the 12 for the 24 terabyte server.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, um.
Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah, Mike's second. All in favor say aye.
All right.
Aye. Anybody opposed, abstention? Then that carries. All right, parking lot?
Uh, sure, thank you. Parking lot and sidewalk curb repairs. Uh, attached, there's a quote for 7458 from FNF Construction to remove and replace stair nosing at East Granby High School. We have some of our concrete stairs on the side of the back of the building that, that, um, metal piece is off, so you've kind of got the, kind of the holes sticking out, and it's kind of a trip hazard. Uh, we'd like to repair those, um. My understanding is kind of a specialty, and there weren't a lot of, um, companies to get bids from, so we did get the one for 7458. The overall request is for $20,000, because it was tied in to fix our sidewalks and curbs. However, that will be done until the spring or after the final, combined with this final season. So we don't have a quote for that. Um, when we did our budget planning, we did put it together for 20,000, uh, we are able to do the work on the nosing before the winter, which is why I'm coming to for that.
So you want 7458 right now?
Yes.
Or 8,000, say, to just, you can return it.
And then we'll entertain the 12, 5 at some future date.
Yes.
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'll make a motion to approve with the sum not to exceed $8,000 for parking lot and sidewalk curb repairs at the East Granby High School, uh, with any unspent funds to be returned to the town.
I'll second that. Any questions?
To clarify, though, that should be for stair repairs, not, uh.
What did I say?
You said parking lot.
I'm just reading this out there.
Yeah.
It's specifically for the nosing on the stairs.
Replace stair, oh, you're just doing the stair nosing right now? Okay, I'll amend my motion.
Is there a second of that?
Yep.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Thank you guys. All right, the new wall.
Thank you. New wall with power at the East Granby High School library. We are shifting our odds in classrooms. The high school has some classrooms that are larger, some are probably standard, and we have some that are, are quite small. We are in need for some, um, larger classrooms. We have a computer lab, it's been a dedicated computer lab for, for years, that we don't need to use as much as we had in the past, because we are one-to-one, so a lot of our students have phone books. The idea is to move those computers into the library, however, we do need a, a new wall with some power. Um, this will allow us to then make that space into a more general classroom with multi-person, uh, usage. We are still in the design phase, when I spoke to Ray Carlson, um, he thought that 10,000 not to exceed is a good budget number. However, I do not have the design, um, my concern with waiting until the spring, because I didn't think I would have enough time to do it over the summer for next year, which is why I'm coming to now for that.
Without a quote, it's kind of hard to vote on something. But we can.
I, I understand.
So you can't really move forward before you get a quote and a design? And I, the board's been very flexible about meetings and having, you know, scheduling, they can schedule a town meeting, and so I'm sure they're going to have one before the spring, right? So, yeah.
Is there any anticipated town meeting that, what we're talking about tonight, would show up on?
Yeah, I'm, we're thinking about December 10th. Yeah.
Take it to it by then?
Well. I don't know who we're going to meet.
You have, you need to have another.
That's okay. I anticipated that, you know, but, my, historically, my, my experience here, we've done all of our capital reports, quotes in June, which made it really challenging to do everything over the summer for obvious reasons. So knowing that this was coming down the day of our town meeting, and I try and be, you know, respectful about having to be town meeting, so, um, that's fine, we can wait until.
All right.
We would need the Board of Finance to meet again if you did it in December anyways.
Right, and I won't have, right, I don't even have time to do that.
All right, um, and that was, uh, that was all of them, right?
That is.
Okay. All right, let's go to General Government.
Okay, I'll be sure, uh, I have, um, 160,000 for the infrastructure planning for School Street. I sent a memo which explained some of the questions that were at last month's meeting. Uh, I can read through it if you'd like.
Sure, I, I was unable to, um, get it.
Okay. Um, so the questions were, Jeff had some questions about, um, some, some of the requests for proposal numbers, and why they popped up twice, so I can just read a memo from, uh, the town planner. The Board of Finance has asked for some clarification on the request an RFP submitted for capital funds to be allocated to the School Street realignment design project. By way of background, in 2023, the town hired Goman in New York to perform a Village Center master plan study. As part of the study, Goman in New York explained the importance of creating a sense of public ground connectivity in the town village area, speed to pedestrians, and more. The School Street realignment project was considered as part of that Village Center study, as it has been on the town's radar as an important element in making a walkable, safe village area for the town, especially because the other main thoroughfare is Route 20. Based on the information staff had regarding the School Street realignment from previous planning staff and the recommendations made by Goman in New York, I engaged the services, I meaning Robin, of CHA engineers to provide a concept plan for the project to be submitted for a lotsit grant. It should be noted, the town of East Granby has never received a lotsit grant. This award from CROG is an important accomplishment for the town. First, we received a non-matching grant in the amount of $3.25 million. This grant is likely the only way a project of this magnitude would get completed in a small community like East Granby. This is significant. This is a non-matching grant. This means the town is not responsible for coming up with the typical 20% match normally required. If this had been another grant with a match, the town would be looking at $625,000 for the match and money, and plus money for the design plans, which would total, um, close to $1 million. After the award and kickoff meeting with CROG in June 2024, an RFP was prepared in accordance with the requirements CROG asked for in the June meeting. It should be noted, all aspects of this project must follow strict guidelines from CROG and state DOT. The RFP went out in August. During the initial RFP window, an issue with the state DAS system, that's where we post RFPs, showed that our, RFP is canceled. The town received three initial awards during the first bid, which included, I don't know if that was, which included, um, KES engineering for $183,525, which was complete and included the drainage design as requested by the RFP. Two Cardinal engineering for $434,000, which not include all costs that may be pulled, um, lines with to be determined. WMC engineering for $215,100, and additional $111,000 for drainage work, for a total of $326,100. After reviewing the submission and the differences in the submissions themselves, not just with the cost, but overall proposals, and the fact that the DAS website had erroneously emailed system users that the RFP was canceled, staff re-advertised the RFP in the hopes that other firms may want to submit a proposal. Upon the deadline for re-submission, the following happened. KES engineers, original submission was still in consideration, but request $183,525. Cardinal engineering rebid $425,000, still incomplete with requested RFP portions and still had to be determined costs. WMC engineering came in at $214,100 with a drainage system design at $79,000 for a total of $293. The town engineer, Tom Gromaldi, town planner, Robin Newton, and first selection, all reviewed the associated submissions. All firms are qualified to provide the services requested, however, KES engineering and WMC engineering were the only two firms to properly follow their requests for items made in the RFP. Due to what is likely limited funding for design and being conscientious of the town's budget, the recommendation was to award the contract to KES engineers. Calls are made to the references provided, and we are waiting finalization of the funding to be able to award the RFP to KES engineers. Time is a factor for the award, as the proposals are only good for a limited time. So that's how we ended up with, with what we ended up with. So, um, so the total, as I told you, is 183,525, and we're only requesting 160, because we do have 25,000 of our funds still designated to the Village Center.
All right, so is there a motion on, uh, 160?
I'll make a motion to accept a bid of 160,000 for, um, center work for the town. I'll second that. So.
So, can we, are we ready for questions?
Yeah, but do we want, it's, it's not really center work, right? Is it School Street realignment design?
I heard, School Street realignment design plans.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, so let's go ahead with, uh, questions.
So, a couple questions, so have you, uh, I mean, the people that looked at it are familiar with this, but there was, was no material differences that would have affected our, our application between the three, other than the fact that you state, with the things that you stated?
Um, one was the biggest important, the most important was the drainage design.
Right.
And she verified it did include, was included. Um, but.
She verified, because I don't, not that, but I, I didn't print out the whole thing.
Yeah, she verified.
She did, so we have confirmation.
Yes. Yep.
Because I don't see it on here.
Tom reviewed them all, too, so that was his most important.
Well, was it, it was part of the RFP, correct?
Yes, but some people added that as like an à la carte. Yes, but some people added that it's like an à la carte, like it's gonna cost this much more. So we just made sure it's included in the one eighty-three, which-
I would assume if they didn't exclude it, it's automatically included, okay. The other question I have is, are you putting, because I, I just came from a building committee meeting, and I know what's involved with each step in the way you have to go through with that. Do you have, do you have an idea of putting a building committee? Because you're talking about a big project. We're talking about spending three and a half million dollars or whatever, state money and our money. Are you going to put a building committee together to oversee that? Other than just, because currently we have-
Robin's lead on it, so yes, I will definitely recommend doing that.
Yeah, I had a conversation with two folks that have been involved in the past for this amount of money. I mean, we're, we're meeting every, every couple of months to pay bills for a hundred thousand dollars for the HVAC project. You're gonna be paying millions of dollars-
I don't know how much CROG has, because it's a CROG grant, so I don't know how much they oversee it, but I'll definitely, yeah.
Definitely, I, I would, I would really like an answer, because we're, we're approving this on faith in some ways because we don't have, I know every, every project, the schools, all the other things that we were, we, it, it's a grant, so it's different. And I'm just, I'm not sure how the reimbursement happens. Do, do they pay the vendor directly?
Yeah, I'll find out.
You know what I'm saying? So what we've been doing in the past is paying the vendor and then getting reimbursement. That's a substantial amount of money to use if we're not, I'm just not familiar with this.
Yeah, and so I know we're gonna bring out our actual construction of it.
Right.
Company we're gonna hire, I'll find out about that, if they're in charge of it all.
I would highly, because there's some talented people in town. I would highly consider putting a group together, because every time we sit down, somebody asks an interesting question. And you're, you know, it's something that nobody thought of, you know? Right, not right now, but maybe in the, the future.
Sorry, no. Maybe get the Village Center Study Commission back together again? Because we're already kind of familiar with the plan, that might be easiest from-
Yeah, you're just, you, you want a group of people looking at all the-
I mean, there's like eight to ten of us, right? That's-
Right, especially if you have to decide between different quotes and things like that.
Anyway, so that, that would be my concern, and, and, yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, it looks like, oh, one other question. So, just out of curiosity, there's proposals in this property that seem to involve personal people's land.
Yeah, we've reached out to homeowners and-
Do they have, you don't have anything in writing or anything?
Um, well, she reached out to the big, to like Silverman Group because it does affect them, their lands. It affects liquor cabinet, so we've talked to them.
So do, just for my understanding, do they own the plaza now, Silverman Group?
Yeah.
Is it infringing on the owner of the plaza's property?
Yes. Um, well, a, a little bit.
I don't know where that property line is, I'm just looking at where they got the road, is that, I'm familiar with that area somewhat. My concern is, is there the potential for one particular, these are just questions I would ask if I was sitting in a building. Is there one, is there any landowners that could potentially upend this project?
I don't believe so.
Could we find out?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay at this point, but that's one of the things that, uh-
I think we talk to the ones that it would be impacting. Yeah, so I'll talk to Robin, because she did most of the business outreach. I did, I did with Silverman and, and Liquor Cabinet with her, but-
It's, the state didn't require, you know, not to, I mean, I, I've got, the state didn't require commitments to allocate to fund it? Then, well, if we're doing it, let's do it.
Other questions? All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Right.
Any opposed?
Um, okay, next is, we can drop down to the fire department. You should have the quote for the equipment modern, modernization for eight thousand dollars. And for Engine 208. This had come up at a previous meeting, but I resent the bids the other day. And nineteen thousand for the personal protective equipment. That's for a total of twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, and that's twenty-seven thousand is what's in the budget. All right, so is there a motion and a second?
I'll make a motion for the twenty-seven thousand for the equipment PPE.
Now, do we actually, do we need two? I think we should probably-
Yeah, probably two separate ones, because that's probably the town meeting.
We'll do nineteen for the PPE. For a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion on PPE?
Only that I think we really need to get some of this stuff back into the operating.
Yeah, we do.
Because I think as long as it's capital, it's subject to like not being purchased, you know what I mean? I think we need to look real hard at that next year. I mean, we slid it in there, and I'm never, I was never, you know, it was a muddy year. But I think we need to get that in and make sure that the budget for the fire department is sufficient to cover PPE. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I think we're gonna talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's like-
Oh, did you, yeah, yeah, I mean, that's just not, and even stuff like, I mean, tires, you have to buy them forty at a time, I can see that's capital. Twenty thousand dollars worth of air packs, but, but even equipment modernization, I'm not even sure that that's a, that's a capital item. You know what I mean?
I agree.
That's something that they got, anyway, so, yeah, that's my comment.
Any other questions, uh, eighteen thousand fifty? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, extensions? Okay, is there a motion for the eight thousand for Engine 208 equipment?
I'll make a motion to put Engine 208 with more, with more modern equipment.
Um, question I have is just, the eight thousand is the sum of, we got like a few quotes, like sixty-three, fifty, eight twenty-five, six, seven, just keep adding those together. Um, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, extensions, if that counts? Are there any other?
Yep.
The trim, right?
Yep, so, um, this was brought up also at a meeting, and, I believe it was, maybe not. But we only have one quote from East Coast Builders who does a lot of our stuff like that. And Ray did try to get more, but we only ended up with one. For thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight, to replace the trim on the, um, the side of the town hall entrance. It's not safe to use, it's a big pediment head that's out there. So it includes labor, materials, fasteners, adhesives.
Who's your company? I don't have a quote for me.
It's the, this one, yeah. Um, includes removal and disposal of the old pediment head. And they'll have to design a new one to match it as close as possible.
Did we have, this was in the budget as, as for fourteen thousand?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to replace rot, for the quote from, what was it?
East Coast Builders?
East Coast Builders, for the sum of fourteen thousand dollars to replace rotten trim on Town Hall West Entrance. And with all unused funds to be returned to the town.
Your second. Any other questions for discussion?
When are they gonna do it?
We're gonna, it's getting hold, but I don't know, I'll ask. Weather stays like this hopefully.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, questions?
And so my last item is my new blue highlight that I used on the capital plan. So, the Plan of Conservation and Development had come up at last month's meeting. And, um, Mike, you had asked to get, to put it out to RFP, so I did talk to Robin about it. So, um, I have a solution, so we don't have to use capital funds. But I just wanna kind of go into the history a little bit of it. Um, so if we do put it out to P, if we put the Plan of Conservation and Development out, which is due, due every ten years, um, if we do put it out to an RFP, Tiki already said they're gonna double their price because that's what-
Who said they would double their price?
The, Robin's company.
They would double their quote?
Yeah, because that's what they charge. So I did call surrounding towns and ask, you know, how much they pay and what are they getting. So, um, some towns applied for grants, they got a grant. Um, a couple towns did, used in-house, um, used their town planner, which is what we did last time. But our last town planner was paid ninety thousand, Robin's paid forty. So, um, she's not gonna do it for free. So, and then, like, Suffield has a planner and an assistant planner with, I don't know what the combined income is or combined pay is. But, um, so the fifty thousand, and we don't need another one for another ten years. So, I think, you know, um, to me, it sounds like a good deal. But, um, so to avoid using capital funds, I was talking to Kelly, um, and, um, about using LoSiP. Not to be confused with LotSiP, which is local capital, um, traffic improvement funds. Um, LoSiP is local capital improvement funds. And they're typically, so we get grant funding, I don't know the exact total, you might know that we get every year, but, um, typically Public Works uses it for groundwork. Um, it's a grant, so, um, one of the uses you can use it for is a, is a Plan of Conservation and Development. You just can't use it more than once every ten years. And we do have, um, one of our, our LoSiP grant fund account does have fifty-three thousand, forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents in it. So my ask is that we use the LoSiP funds to pay for it. Um, one of the rules for LoSiP is you have to show the amount on your five-year capital plan. And, um, but just knowing that we're using LoSiP funds instead. So it doesn't really, it's not the total, it can be removed from the total capital, right? Am I saying it right?
Yeah, yeah, on the, when you, um, apply, um, when you submit it to the state to say how you've used the funds, you have to show that it was designated on the five-year capital plan and that it would be funded by the LoSiP grant.
So we still have to send an application into them, but-
Can we make an addition to our five-year capital plan mid-year? Don't we vote on this? We can just add it, is what you're saying, or we just have to designate a line for it?
Yeah, you'd have to show it on the five-year capital plan as being funded by the LoSiP grant.
Well, yeah, so we had it in the plan for next year, for fifty thousand. So we can move it to this year.
Yeah. I, I'd put it in-
For revenue.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Could we show a revenue like a transfer from LoSiP?
When we would be refund, so we already have the money. It's in the LoSiP fund. So if anything, you could move money out of capital into the LoSiP fund to spend it. I, I'm not sure if it has to do the same process of town meeting.
Um, it does have to go to town meeting.
So it still has to be approved by Board of Finance and town meeting. But when we got the fifty-three thousand or so, um, at one of your meetings, you, the Board of Finance set up a separate fund so that we could track the LoSiP monies.
That was last meeting, I think, right?
Yeah.
The Board or two set this nice package.
So we still have some LoSiP money from, um, the entitlement program, a little over seventy, so that was the old LoSiP. Fiscal twenty-four was the new LoSiP where they sent us the money, so the seventy-three the state still holds. You'd have to spend it, and then they, you submit all your paperwork and they send it back. With twenty-twenty-four and forward, bless you, twenty-twenty-four and forward, they send the town the money. That's why we set up the separate fund. And then you can accumulate that and spend it on something. So it would be at the discretion of the selectmen and, as to which, whether they want to use the entitlement or the grant. There's more than fifty in both of them, they're just different.
So, no, no issue. Sure, I have, so we spend the fifty thousand on the Plan of Conservation and Development, submit to the state for approval to use LoSiP funds on that. So initially, we spend it out of capital?
So it depends if you're using entitlement, which was the old one, in which case, yes, the town fronts the money, fronts the spending, and then they reimburse it, and that money would go back into the capital when it gets reimbursed. If you use the new grant that we got in fiscal twenty-four, which is just a little over fifty, it would just, we already have that money, so it would just be approving to spend it on the Plan of Conservation. But you still have to report to the state what you spent the fif, you know, what you spent the money on, and you have to show-
Add it to our plan with that money.
It just has to be shown on the plan.
It has to be shown, yeah.
Show it on the plan, but we won't, you can't add it to our total, right?
Stand on this one.
We're gonna show it as other funded, so, something like that.
As long as it's legal.
Okay, yeah, we checked.
I mean, the auditor's gonna look at it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, I-
They can, um, start the work in January, so, ready for twenty-twenty-six.
Well, to be fair, it is a new set of eyes, basically, it's not the person who did the last one. You know, it would have been, you said that they came up with, you didn't find a town that actually paid somebody to do it? It was all-
I only called, I called just our surrounding town.
Yeah, it would have to be a similar sized town that would have, like, a town like Hartland has to do it. But they don't have staff to do it, so how, you know, that would be a curious question. Well, whoever's here in ten years can have that conversation. You want a motion?
So, yeah, did we have a motion?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars from the capital fund.
It depends if you're gonna do the-
LoSiP fund that-
From the LoSiP fund.
Came from twenty-twenty-four because we don't have to, we have to file paperwork this month.
It's called grant funds.
For a sum not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to pay for a boat from Tish, do they call them so?
Pike.
Pike? Pike Plan Planning and Policy Group, with all unf- for the, for the twenty, what's the year?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-five?
It's June twenty-twenty-six.
Twenty-twenty-six Plan of Conservation and Development. For all unspent funds to be returned to the town. Guess you still have to say that.
The LoSiP fund, is how I will write it, yeah.
Second that. Motion, second, and any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay?
Thank you.
That's it for capital, for then. All right, the next item is clo, uh, consider elementary school fund closeout. Let's see, a question came up about whether we could close it out. Miss, you sent along the, uh-
I did, we did approve it at Board of Selectmen on Wednesday.
So, everything you need?
Just, we need to both?
Yes, at least, no, and to transfer the funds back to the general.
What's the total? Yeah, what's the total on that?
Five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents.
Twenty-eight cents?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six cents.
Five six five seven two six seven six?
Five six five two seven six.
No, seven two six.
Oh, seven two six, seven six. Got me.
That's awesome.
And we're, we're voting to return it to the, to what?
You're just voting to close it and then the funds to be returned to the general.
Close what, I'm sorry.
Elementary school fund.
I'm sorry, it's your, it's your baby.
It's from two thousand and-
I'm not adopting.
It's from Seymour. Yeah, which project was it?
Well, it's actually Seymour on Women's Work Education projects altogether.
I remember. I remember.
But they were, the board had been looking in two thousand eighteen to those other projects.
Two thousand eighteen.
Waiting for the final audit, who, who, who inducted this past year.
So I'll make a motion to close out the two thousand and twelve elementary school project. I guess that's what we'll call it, right?
It was the fund, the elementary school fund.
The elementary school fund with the sum, of the sum, five hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to be returned to the general fund, the town will be scramby. Good?
A sec. I'll second that. And so, uh, question for Kelly, um, that will show up, assuming it's approved, and does town meeting have to approve that as well?
No.
So, assuming we approve it.
I don't think so.
That will add new revenue in the general fund.
It'll be a transfer in.
A transfer, but will it? So, right, right, it'll look like new money in there.
Correct. Yep. So the option you could entertain, because the funds technically came from the bonding, is to pay off the bond early. However, the interest that you're paying on the bond is less than what you're earning in the stiff account, so.
We could have that conversation.
Yeah, that could be at a later time, but.
Did you get that information, like the percentages and stuff, because we're.
I'd have to look what the bond is, but I'm just earning about five percent right now, I definitely.
Was that the bond that will expire in twenty-six?
And it's about to expire, yes.
What we would need to know is the balance, what the interest rate is, and what we're getting in current return.
You, you don't have the amortization schedule on you, do you?
Um, I won't be able to find it that quick, but we're paying around five, five sixty in the current year, five fifty's next year, and five fifteen the year after.
We still owe one point five million, give or take.
And I'm pretty certain the interest rate that you were paying on it is less than five percent.
Are there any higher interest rate, um, items that we're paying that we could pay down? Be the other question.
Good point. But I know the interest rate that we got on the last project was extremely low.
Yeah, I think both the bonds that we were handing are below.
That's what we need to know, the percentages, balances, amortization schedule, cuz to your point, if you pay it off early, is it, all these bonds are payable early?
I would have, I don't know if there's a, I'd have to ask our bond advisor if there's like a prepayment.
Yeah.
Or T or, um, anything like that. I just, at one point, we looked at the interest and I don't, it didn't make sense from an interest standpoint with the interest rates so high on.
Right, it'd be crazy, right? I mean, we could do it next year, but is that something that she could look into? Just kidding, I feel bad while I was asking Kelly for.
Our debt, we set, I mean, the debt service is part of the budget that the town approved, so we couldn't just go and change it right now, we would have to.
You'd have to go back to the town.
Meeting, or just build it into the next budget cycle. Would be to make that.
Part of your cash balance, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
It would make the tax increase next year a little bit easier to maneuver around. Anyway.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, and then a discussion, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Sentions? Okay, that carries. All right, the next item is, uh, town land sales, and before we get, I just, I really intend this item for financial questions that we might have, like. You know, there was a public hearing, it's all kind of information, so it's really if, if people had specific financial questions. Understanding is we're down to one property at the moment, but, um...
I just have a few, a few questions financial, financially related. Are, are we doing any sort of analysis to see the cost, loss, benefit? You know what I mean? So like, I'm gonna use a round figure, you're selling a property for twenty thousand bucks, what is, what is it costing us to do that? Cuz I think from a more finance perspective, that's a consideration. I mean, I understand we're not, you know, land speculators, but we don't wanna lose money, and.
Well, there's only one, uh, property on the table for tomorrow, anyway, so.
But do we know the cost of making that sale to the, okay, I'll, I'll cut to the chase. Who's paying the cost for all of the attorney's fees? And there was a meeting the other night, I know we had the town attorney sitting there for three hours, she doesn't do that for free. You know, these are all considerations when you're making the sale. And I've bought a lot of real estate, there's fifty different fees. Are we charging fees to these buyers? Have we, are we?
Buyers paying their own closing costs and their own surveying and their, um, so. He gave me, the town attorney gave me a total for the closings for all three closings, but, um, I'll have him break it down for one.
But they're paying that, we're not paying that.
We would be paying our own closing.
Well, that's what, what, let me finish, yeah. We shouldn't. My point is, if we sell a property, you know, you're selling it at a, at a reduced rate. Oh, let me, let me, I gotta, just to, to, they're all around the value, you know? But if, if you're selling a property that's owned by the town, I think the Board of Finance has some consideration of that. What's the value, what are we gaining, what are we losing? It's the dollar figure. That's what we need to know. We can't get into like, the semantics is my opinion, okay? We can't get into the semantics of right or wrong, because that's for the town to decide and Board of Selectmen, but we do need to know the cost. So I think, from my perspective, the two questions that I came up to my mind were, were there any appraisals done of the properties when somebody submitted the offer?
Yes.
Did you share those with anybody?
Yes.
Can you?
Yes.
Okay. And so that's one of the ways that you kinda determine whether or not we're doing something that's financially.
It doesn't exceed the purchase cost, that's for sure. I mean.
What's that?
It doesn't exceed the purchase cost, any closing cost wouldn't exceed the purchase cost.
Well, when you're selling something for five thousand bucks, I know I've had a lot of closings that were far in excess of five thousand.
I mean, the closings for all three were only total forty-five hundred, according to the attorney, so.
Those are the actual filing costs, that's the cost for them.
He told me when, I mean, I shared that email with, I don't know, um, somebody who asked, um, so it's, yeah, I'll get an exact number for one.
You know where I'm going, because it, it's not just that, you had an attorney sitting.
It won't be more than five thousand dollars, that's for sure, I mean, we're not gonna lose money.
But if we're making five hundred dollars, why are we doing it?
Well, it's not to make money, it's to help a resident who's trying to build a barn.
Well, I, I know, but you still have to.
Right, we don't sell, the town doesn't sell property to make money. But we also aren't gonna sell it to lose money either.
That's my point.
Right.
Yeah, we need to quantify the value to the town. And if we're, if we're not benefiting at some level, I struggle with the financial reason.
Yeah, I mean.
That's it, you know, so. Anyway. What's up?
Yeah, it's already on, it's on the list.
I agree, I totally, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we, we've given, there's lots of examples in the past where someone wanted to do something like the Rosanskis, and we, the town gave it to the homeowner for a dollar. That, you know, so this has just turned into its own animal, so.
Oh, I agree.
Lucky me.
Uh, yeah, well.
Lucky us.
You know, I.
But I mean.
Well, we're not gonna get into that, but I just thought from, strictly from more to finance perspective, that, that gain-loss to the town is an important question. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I, my only question is, are, are you aware of other parcels that may come up for sale? That are on the radar in the next.
No, we didn't put these up for sale, these were asked, so I haven't gotten a request from anyone else, no.
Are you thinking of buying something?
I mean, I asked, I asked, um, two employees that have been here for over thirty-five years, and they had six months, I, they took six months, just let me know when you think about it, and when they had an opportunity to think about it, there just wasn't anything else on their minds. But you never know if there's a resident with an abutting town property.
Especially now.
Right. So.
Well, I have one more. Um, and this is just what I've been hearing and seeing, and I think one big concern is, back to Mike's point about maximizing the value as well. I think that we also need to make sure that it's, it's advertised well. I, I think that these were anomalies because two of the properties were landlocked and one of them was unusable. But for larger properties, like if something that is usable goes up for sale, that we have a process to make sure that it is transparent, so we can maximize the potential revenues. And I know that there's some sort of process in place that you were talking to about kind of limiting it, what's the business use, making sure that foreign bodies aren't buying it to protect their assets and stuff like that. But that would be the only other piece that I would say to be aware of.
Any other questions, comments? Um, that brings us to financial reports. I think we missed the timing for the Board of Ed, but, um...
Got a nice colorful one from the town today.
Yeah, got the town financial, and I.
Almost like it's for the season. This is great.
I mean, it's, it's hard to forecast only four months into it. I mean, your biggest expenses are always gonna be coming from DPW, San Antonio. How cold is it gonna be? We're now forecasting through October, the savings of two hundred and ten, it could be seventy-eight. You know, last month it was seventy-six. You know, it's pretty easy to see the variances, you've got savings in fire, you've got savings in DPW, but with only being four months into the year, there's nothing really flagging to be alarmed. We have to see what happens to the winter. Um, we do know that we have two, one new employee coming on the health insurance plan, so January first, and that's gonna be another fifty thousand, we have to add, just got that email last week. So there's always gonna be ebbs and flows. But right now, you're pretty much in line, you're looking at good, good trending at the moment. Eventually, one point, you don't wanna get, Kelly tried to bring revenues into this as well, because we need both, you know, to do a proper forecast.
Me.
But any of you on, if he can help?
I don't think anybody's gonna complain about more information.
Any questions for recent?
Good thing, interesting.
Are we getting into specific questions, or is this just the general, at this point, you had a question about like the RCC and stuff like that?
Yeah, whatever question, yeah.
Okay, so I know this, this year we implemented the bulk disposal, and from what I'm seeing, and I might be reading this wrong, we got less revenues than we were anticipating, but my understanding is we also, also did not spend nearly as much. Do we have a year-to-date compare from what we did last year, fiscal to this year?
I don't believe it's a separate line item, because you're saving on the tipping fees, because you have in the bulkie waste, you don't have the tipping fee cost.
Right, I was wondering if we had.
Separate line, but I can get that to you for next month, before the end.
Okay, cuz that's what I, that's what I'd really be curious on is, cuz we're obviously not seeing those, right? So this is a, so you're saying this is a net number of bulk fee versus tipping costs, or?
The fees are actually broken out there, and you can see that the fees are not coming in as much as we originally collected.
Right. So what I'm sa- what I'm seeing is we were expecting seventy thousand or so for permits, and we got sixty. And we were expecting fifteen thousand or so for bulk disposal, but we only collected five, which, the second piece, I don't necessarily know that that's a bad thing, because that also means that our volumes of dumping are down, and the cost of bulk disposal is one of our biggest expenses.
Yeah, we're hauling like once every five weeks, instead of eight times a month.
Right, and, and I, I.
Eight times a month?
Yeah, we.
Yeah, well, this is our first year doing it.
And that's not just hauling, it's tipping too.
Well, then, you know, kind of throw a dart on the wall and see where we land. So we're gonna see where we are coming into the first month, and that's, but at least have more accurate numbers we can work with, forecast.
Exactly, so my question was, is when we see a lower revenue number than expected, it's not really a bad thing, and I don't want the taxpayers to think that we're getting less revenue than we were anticipating, it's because.
Well, the point wasn't to make mu- more money on bulk waste, it was to save money.
Exactly. Yes.
Plus some money coming out of taxpayers' pockets for additional fees and pumping away those.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, one thing that would help me for next time around, um, the, the descriptions of the variances would be helpful to have more meat on those, like, um, you know, police departments about budget because the salary variance is higher, you know, within the realm of not getting into personal information, if we could speak to that.
Yes, I mean, I have my detailed copies, and I can imagine just to make sure.
Okay. And then the o- other ones, um, where the, where the operating expenses are lower than planned, it'd be helpful to know, like, which one. I mean, I think we have a good line on the DPW, but what's running low on the fire department, and we can have a discussion about whether that.
Generic operating supply, so I wanted to bring it up when you guys were talking about. So I mean, they're forecasting lower, about eighteen grand, but once again, we're only on these two.
All right, but is it a specific expense, or?
None that I saw, and none that Jay pointed out.
That's why I say something like PPE would be great, PPE would be great to roll into the, you know what I'm saying? Cuz that number, number kinda missed that. Anyway.
Also something to think of, or, to the extent you can have, um, meat like that would be helpful.
But we've taught his budget for fire, fire department as well, right? He was probably happy about.
What did you say, Todd? Troy.
Troy, yeah.
You only have Taz or only I'm sure.
My twin brother's name is Troy.
Any, um, any other questions for recent? When we have, we've got a quick report. Wanna walk us through the highlights on this thing?
Um, well, there's not many, but you got the, uh, first, um, ECS payment from the state, so started to get some money from the state. Heidi continues to do wonderful in the Jack Department. Interest continues to be trending very favorably, as well as building permits. Um... Is there anything exciting on the other funds? Nope, nothing really to highlight on any of the other funds.
Any one driver on the building permits, or?
If I recall, when I had talked to, I didn't, it would be a, um, Mark question, but I know there's a lot of the developments starting up. Are you familiar with, what, what authority to receive building permits? So I think it has to do with all the new, like, construction, yeah.
Yeah, it's like thirty hours.
Yeah, so it has to do with the new stuff, I don't know specifically which ones, but.
Tour permits and different types of permits, you know?
Yeah, well, the building permit lines, so. I know that Mark had mentioned, when we were looking at the forecasts, um, when you were working on the next year budget, I know he was really anticipating revenue from those new developments and stuff.
It'd be nice when they go online and start paying taxes, right?
All right, um, is there a motion on the financial reports?
Motion second.
All right, there's a second? I'll second. Any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, extensions? All right, uh, public comments, is there any public comments? Is there any comment on Zoom?
I'm looking.
Can you tell, you have one? A second.
Um, Keith Bobby, six, Washington, Rich. Um, just concerned hearing about the, uh, sell of property at Skidville, and that one night before, the phone, we don't know that the cost of selling a portion of property at Skidville is going to cost some building, so. And also have not, I don't think we fully considered the costs or loss to the town by perking up this property, um, and, and what the ramifications are of splitting that piece of property, you know, to the town in the future. And also concerned about setting precedent, um, you know, if, are we prepared to do this if other residents in the future step forward and make a similar request, are we prepared to take the same consideration? Everybody who comes forward in this situation? So that they can build a structure on the property, because their property is too small to get through, uh, so.
Other public comment? Um, before we adjourn, I'll just, I'll point out, the next meeting is December seventeenth, that's subject to call, so, um, you know, look for maybe like two weeks out, whether there's high quality items. One of the things I would do is, I'm just partnering with the auditor, can see us in January or December. And I would ask the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen if there's urgent items that need to meet at that time, let me know sooner than later. Otherwise, we mean, you know. With that, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, extensions? Opposed, extensions?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you for coming here.
Yes, welcome.